According to the provisions of this act, this Business Administrator Board Secretary has caused their to this meeting, be sent to the following announcing time, place, airport, agenda, et cetera. The Jersey Journal, the administration website and the district website. I have no curtailings, Secretary. I know the superintendent would like to make one quick announcement.
Just a quick announcement. This Wednesday, December 4th, we are dedicating school number three to Senator Robert Jimenez. Public is invited. Gordon is not allowed to go there. It will take place Wednesday, December 4th at 11 o'clock at School Number Three. Thank you.
Okay, this time I'll ask the board members if they have any questions regarding items in the legal portion of the agenda, items 5.1 to 5.8. If there's any questions from any of the board members, would you like to entertain them?
Oh, there is, they did have them.
Does anyone have any questions, any board members? Seeing your questions, we'll open the floor for public comment. In accordance with the Western Europe Education Bible 0167, public participation in board meetings not
Joe, can you hold this?
For three minutes. Three minutes in duration. Please, you can't comment for less than three minutes. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Linda Callenman, 6600 Boulevard East, West New York. My son goes to PS number four school. He's in the sixth grade and he has a very large wheeled backpack. And whenever he goes to and from school, it's stuffed with books. Not only is it stuffed with books, he doesn't have much of a division of books. He has to carry books in his hand in addition to this backpack. I was wondering if there's any way that they could minimize the amount of number of books that should be carried back and forth. His science book, his science book is this big. And it'd be a problem with the bag, you know, later on and get lined up.
I could bring that to your attention after the principal.
Good evening, good afternoon. Happy, uh, belated, happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody enjoyed their turkey. I'd like to say congratulations, everybody show up for once. We're not wasting our time, we're wasting time. So let's get to the scoop and do the right thing here. Because the voters of West New York spoke and they spoke loudly. And they want it done and they want it done correctly. So let's do the right thing today for the people and the children of West New York. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Good afternoon, Joan Palermo, 6600 Boulevard East. I'm sorry, I came in about five minutes after two. I don't know what I missed.
Your court?
I looked up the agenda and it seems to be a fairly lengthy agenda. So I was wondering if anything happened or is the agenda to follow the public's portion of the meeting? This is my first sort of revenue, so I really don't know what is to be discussed. But I would like to know if the agenda that was supposed to go to follow, thank you.
I'll respond to you, ma'am. You haven't missed anything? I just walked in and yes, indeed, our aim is to follow the agenda to a D.
So does the public portion normally proceed the agenda portion of the meeting?
The, we are following proper procedure, yes. The public, the board members have an opportunity to ask questions and the public has an opportunity to make comments. And then we'll go into executive session. And then after executive session, we'll give a vote.
And then you come back out?
Yes, after executive session, then we will come back out and give a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Merly Sanchez, 5907 Buchanan. I have one question. I was here last month and I wanted, I had a question as to, or maybe I'll just re-ask it in a maybe more simplified manner. If you guys can give us maybe some advice as to what you think is the best qualifications to have? Because to be honest, there is going to be an election. So if there is going to be an election, how we, the people, the residents of West New York, would be able to look at a voting and say, well, this person has the right qualification? And since you guys are already members, what would be one of the qualifications that you personally or individually believe is important to have on this board?
Well, I'm, I'm the board attorney, I'll, I'll respond. You know, each board member may have their own views or thoughts as to what they think is a proper qualification. Okay, statutorily, the only qualification is to be, you know, a concerned citizen like yourself and to have a passion for the kids and the community. And I think that personally, I think that that's the most important qualification of a board member. But, you know, I leave it to each of the board members.
We have that disgrace there.
There are such things that one year residence is required, you know, right? English, you know, there is some basic requirements that you go on on in Jersey school boards.
Yeah.
But I think she's talking about something a little bit, you know, the national.
Yeah, for instance, last, last time I was here, it was directed towards who, you know, do we look for people who are, have business management? Do we look for people who have law? Do we look for people? Because, I mean, it's obvious that you guys have to know a little bit of what's going on before you make a decision. So if you believe that, you know, maybe someone that has education, maybe? Like, you know, the area of public education or how the psychology work or what is it that? Well, basically, what is it that brought you all here today?
In my case, for example, I have two kids, Nicholas and Amanda, PS two. They start in the West New York district since they were three and five years old. And also I'm the president of a PTO, R and S organization. And I have a law degree in my country, master's degree here in the University of New Jersey and a certification in New Jersey University. So I think that should be like a parent and also a person with an advanced degree.
Okay, thank you.
Something else you can move over to other place. My question made after we finish the panel session, you guys are going to be in the executive session, right? What is going to be discussed in the executive session? What part of the agenda would be discussed in the executive session?
There is one personnel issue that needs to be discussed in the executive session. If I'm not mistaken, yeah?
That's correct. That's the only thing that's going to be discussed, yes?
Yes. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
May I ask the following question to what you stated? In response to this woman's question about what is required to be a school board member? I did a little research and I came up with something from the New Jersey School Boards Association and it lists a number of legal requirements. None of which are listed. You must be able to read, you must be able to hold university membership and one year's residency.
I can't know, I can't know. Yo, yo, we're recording already.
You are restricted to vote in the districts before filing the nominating petition. Have no interest in any contract with or claim against the board. Not hold offices, mayor or member of the municipal governing body or in the case of county schools. Not be of anybody. Not simultaneously hold two elective offices. Not be disqualified from membership with conviction of certain crimes.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I, and forgive me if I was incorrect. I made an assumption that she wasn't talking about the basic legal requirements. I thought she was talking about other types of qualities that would serve someone in their capacity as a board member. That's, that's the way I took the question, but.
I think you specifically said there are really no legal requirements.
But besides those basics.
Ma'am, I did just rattle off, I said the same thing. Most of the things that you said, you go to the New Jersey school boards about the one year residency, right? English citizenship, I just mentioned that.
You did, you did mention it, ma'am. But, but nonetheless, thank you for bringing that to our attention and for the discussion. It's appreciated, thank you.
Salvayla, 6600 Boulevard East, already 1980, East New River. After the results of the election and the overwhelming number of people who chose to vote yes, I can see how in a town that hasn't had an elected school board since the 1960s, it would require research to figure out how we make and take the next step. And the idea of this special election in January, it's a little hard to understand. But I want to thank Paul as counsel to the board for researching it, for not giving us the wrong answer immediately. And now we know that it's state law that a district like West New York, which is making the switch for the first time, has to follow this procedure. An election, which is called special for two seats in January and an election in April for three seats, which then will be followed one year after another after the board agrees and certifies the length of the terms of each member. Now that we have that information and that information is clear, I think the district should put that in the website. Anybody who requests that information, that information should be given to them in writing, signing the statute. But more important, the board members, if they have it, understand it and sign off on the fact that they understand.
Thank you for your comment.
Good afternoon, Hampton Barquin, 4206 Berlin Avenue, West New York. According to the statement that Mr. Salvayla was mentioning a few minutes ago, right? I was reading the U.S. statute number 188, right? Section nine dash nine, 10 and 11. And they were calling very clearly, right? For an election, right? When the new board comes in from tide one to tide two. An election to be held on April the 23rd, 2013, right? For all the five members involved in the change from seven to nine, right? Which procedure are we following now?
We are proceeding, we are proceeding with the procedure that's been set forth, that is on the agenda. Okay, as I said previously at the, at the last meeting that we were supposed to have. We are, we are following the procedure that's been set forth pursuant to statute. Okay, it has been signed off by all of the council who have reviewed this matter. All right, I appreciate you're referencing a letter from the New Jersey school boards, is that what you said?
That's correct, right, from the county district, right?
And that's, that's appreciated, but it's, it's not dispositive. As I said earlier, council has researched this very carefully.
Okay.
We are bumping up against a deadline. We need to get this done.
This is the last day, right?
You're absolutely correct, yes. And that's why, that's why the, I want to thank the board members who have come here today. All right, which would normally be a day off. And to the members of the community for coming as well to make certain that we can get this done and done properly.
Okay, holding on to the same agenda, right? You said there's going to be one, section six, right? For personnel of our personnel. This related to the Mr. Sylvia Costa's sister, Wilma Costa Vareto? The one that received the services from?
That will be part of the discussion.
Okay, what is the case if it becomes an, a tie in the vote? What would be the decision? Would be no decision, Aggie will continue on the position assigned for?
I would prefer not to speculate on how votes are going to, the outcome of votes. Okay, the members are going to have a discussion and they're going to vote on it. If there is some type of tie or something along those lines, we'll address it accordingly. But I'm not going to speculate on, you know, which, which members are voting which way.
No, no, I just say, just assuming it will be a tie vote. What would be the decision? Would be no decision, so she will continue on the position that have been assigned for?
I'll, I'll, if that's the outcome, I'll probably have a discussion with some of my law partners to decide what makes sense. Because there is a letter that currently says that she cannot continue with the decision.
That's correct, right? That's coming from the DOE, right? From state DOE and from the district too.
From the county.
From the county, from the county.
She's currently not serving in the position. She has not served in the position.
Okay, I know, but why, why this has to happen from in the beginning, right? You be the superintendent of a school. You didn't see this was in violation of like calling nepotism, right? It's a direct relationship, right? With Mr. Sylvia Costa, one of the members of the board.
We were made, I was made aware of this after the fact. And that's why we moved to do what we did.
Oh, you were not aware? Neither Clara Herrera was aware of that? It was a kind of nepotism that had been existing for, for a long time. And even after that, they informed from the DOE from before that the political involvement, right? Of Mr. Rock and Mr. Sylvia Costa granting positions and creating new position for the people working in the board of education and just granting position, right? To the people that were following him. And making, making liable, liable things against the people that are not in favor of him. Is that, you never see this thing before? Is that right? You never see this kind of movement? This political agenda involved with the environment of the condition.
This is going to be corrected one way or the other.
I've been, pardon?
It's going to be corrected.
I've been corrected?
It's going to be corrected.
It's going to be corrected, I know.
It's going to be corrected by this board or it's going to be corrected by the Department of Education?
Well, I hope so. I've been taken out a few months already that.
Thank you so much for your comments. How many minutes has it been?
About four minutes.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Okay.
We have to follow the procedures. It's been more than three minutes. Thank you.
First, quick, Francisco Ferrero, 5206 Berlin Avenue, West New York, New Jersey. First, Mr. Fallowson, you did not know it was Sylvia's family that you were recommending to be hired? Yes or no?
We did the interview process.
Did you know it was his family?
Yes.
Before you did the interview process?
Yes.
You just answered Mr. Barrick with no. Let me leave that at that.
But I know, but let me, let me answer this question. We did not know we had to go to the county superintendent.
You just answered him no. I only have three minutes, I'm sorry. Mr. Sylvia Costa shouldn't be in your executive session meeting since it is relating to the hire of his sister.
He has recused himself in the past and I.
He shouldn't be in the meeting period.
Excuse me, I believe he will accuse himself today.
All right, now, what I want to go on to, I want to clarify some things that have been flipped a little bit. In my protest against having two elections, one in January, one in April. Okay, my protest is from, I care about our school system. I don't want to see our school system spend $100,000 extra without, without putting up a fight at least, basically. I know it says, I know a statute says 130 days and April 23rd falls a few days past that, 20 something days. It's just, I, I, I see it, one, if you, if you grant an election for January, let's say the latest day of January, January 30th, 31st, whatever, that gives 60 days. You don't even give fair time for people to, to petition and campaign. It's just going to be, it's a horrific election and it's not right. But I, I, I kind of see the ulterior motives behind it. No problem. But, but the bigger part is there that, and this goes to you, school board members. You should, you know, ask your attorneys to do the work that, you know, that's important. When, when Mr. Frank Lautenberg died recently, a special election was declared. Christie wanted to have it one way with two different elections. Some people from the Democratic Party knew that that was statute. But they went all the way to the courts, to, to the high courts to try to protest it, to say that, and they were right, that, you know, New Jersey was going to spend 40 something million dollars on two special primary elections, that, you know, it could have been carried over to November. But nevertheless, they fought to do the right thing.
Would you, would you suggest, let me ask you a question. Would you suggest spending the legal fees, the enormous legal fees to challenge something like that? Which is clear by statute?
No, I wouldn't suggest it. But I would suggest making the phone calls and asking, hey, look, listen, is there any way possible? You didn't even go that route though. Your route, you guys were just determined to have two special elections. Six months ago, I don't know if you all recall, six months ago, there wasn't $90,000 for school supplies, pencils, books, whatever it is, school supplies for the kids. But now there's $100,000 to waste, to, to spend where, you know, maybe you could have said to whoever the powers may be, let's look into this.
We understand your comment, I appreciate it. Believe me, if there was a way to do the election without spending $100,000, we could, we could.
Have you ever even talked about it to the AG's office and to the six people you sat with? Did you even ask them? Listen, is there a way to have all these five people elected in the board?
There was a unanimous agreement, all right? That this was the only way to proceed.
Was that question even ever posed?
So I'm not going to tell you about internal discussions, about.
I'm sure it wasn't.
Legal discussions.
I, I, I hope the board members here question that.
It was agreed upon by all parties that this was the only way to proceed. And there is no way that anyone wants to run afoul of it. Okay, that's why we're here today. All right?
The, the way that it's being ran with, it's not in the heart of the school district.
Count Wiley, 610 Monroe Place, West New York. First, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope this is a tough day to be here. We could be with our families, et cetera. Thank you for coming here. Could I make sure that this was handled properly? It's the responsibility of each and one of you board members here to do this, okay? I, I can understand also their frustration here that they have, okay? And there's a lot of times you come to these meetings, whether it's the town or the Board of Ed. And a lot of things get unanswered, a lot of things aren't handled properly. Okay, incidents with, I have to always do, this is one thing that eats me a little bit. Is the incidents when someone doesn't go to work and they're not relieved of their duties and then fired from their job. And the Board of Ed, which were you members, sat there and didn't do anything about it. And then I was told, well, if it wasn't brought up on the table, it dies. You know, that was very irresponsible of each and every one of you, okay? And especially you, that you say that you're a mother, you have two children here. I don't know if you brought that up or you could have brought that to the table and dissected it by somebody else. Okay, so it's great to have that education, but what you do in your actions, that changes everything. You can have all the background, all the degrees you want, but it doesn't matter. But when you're not defending the children and what's best for this community, that's when you end up with a problem. That's why you're sitting here and you're a target here for the people. And what I, I understand and I'm really happy and I want to thank you guys all being here. Because it's very responsible to them to take interest in this community to make sure that this election does happen. And that the people that will be elected will be people of quality. People like Merly had said with law degrees, with background, with education. But most of all, the heart to make sure that these kids get the best of what they deserve. And not to appease a political agenda such as Mr. Acosta here with hiring his family members. And this isn't the only place that this gentleman has put family members. He's also put family members in the Board of Ed. One's a supervisor, got into a fight with a gentleman over assigning a number voting yes to an elected board. That's the quality of people that we have sitting on this board, which I don't approve of, and you know that. Okay, and you shouldn't even be sitting there, sir. I'll be honest with you, Mr. Acosta. Influencing these board members sitting next to you to do what they're supposed to do, whatever you tell them to do. Okay, so I want the public to know what you're, you're about. And understand why this election has to happen. And why, I will make sure, no matter what, and you know me better than anybody, I fight to the death. And I will make sure that this community will get the best board they possibly can get. So I just want you to know that. But I want you to remember now, when you go back and vote in this room, in this executive session, we call it, you make sure that you vote, you make sure that this gentleman's family member does not end up here in his school system. It is nepotism, it is special interest and it's political influence. And it doesn't belong here in our school system. I don't even approve of the, of the mayor's family members working inside the town or in this Board of Ed. All right, there's many more and all throughout the town. But I'm very, as a commissioner, I'm very disgusted. I'm unhappy what's been going on here. And I promise you, this will not take place in the future of West New York.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
No.
John Smith from 610 Buchanan Place, West New York. Good afternoon. First thing, I used to respect you, Mr. Acosta. You used to be an inspector at the Town Hall. You remember my face, 6104 Buchanan. Change, things have changed. Honestly, you don't belong there. Half the families and stuff like that don't belong there. Number two, the lady in the purple shirt. What school did your child go to?
Sir, I, I don't think she, she needs to explain where.
No, no, okay. You want to be the head in charge because no one here don't want to answer. It's like a road case for that demonstration.
Hold on, I'll be clear. She shouldn't have to tell you where her kids go to school.
Well, you know why? Number six school. Number four school got fixed. Number one school got fixed and all that. My son has been going to the number six school since four years old. Stuff hasn't been repaired. There was lead poisoning or lead paint at that time. Now all of a sudden we got these little barricades all over the school. First of all, we have pictures that people were working on that school while kids were getting out of school. We told them nicely to take the torch, shut it off, do not put any nails in the wood. Do what they tell, tell me? Mind your own damn business. Is that how, that, is there also a type of contractors that either you or Roque's little buddies hire on the side? Because I'm going to tell you something. Now, let me finish, let me finish.
I don't hire any contractors, so you're.
Well, I'm just letting you know where, where we're staying at. Because that school hasn't been fixed for a long as time. You worrying about Roque putting up Mendoza's school. Don't give me too much respect, he is worthy, councilman or whatever he is and everything else. But don't you think that some of the money should be starting to be repaired at number six school? And definitely what we're going to wait, another two more, three years, three years down the road? And then all of a sudden, well, John, your rent is going to be increased because taxes are going to go up because they don't have the funds to fix the number six school.
Can I answer that, please?
Sure, you can.
First of all, the state is the one who's running that project. All the money is coming from the state of New Jersey. If they hire Ricky Soleris, why don't you step up to the mic and explain what's being done with number six school? It's nothing to do with the town or the taxes, this is purely state.
Public school number six or Harriel Bay School right now has scaffolding around it, which is called bridge scaffolding, the safety and well-being of the children as well as the pedestrians. This is a project that has been ongoing with the SDA. The SDA has intention of doing all those repairs. Being the district that we are, those type of repairs and the amount of monies that are, that would be required to those, to do those repairs, we are not allowed to do. The state is required to do so. And that is right down in the works. They have started the exploratory probes that they need to do to see what the repair will entail. And that is expected to happen in the 2015 school year.
Sir, the children, the children will be pulled out of that building and will not be left in any kind of jeopardy or any safety issues. We're working on that.
Okay, now, if the children do decide to get pulled out of that school, what school do you want to put them in?
That, we're going to, we're working on that. We're going to keep it intact. We have a plan, which I can't divulge now, and I'm sure you'll be very happy with it. It's not going to be spread all over the district. We have, we have a very, very solid plan, which I really can't divulge at this time, but you'll know soon enough when it does come to attrition. But believe me, we're not going to put these children in any, any kind of jeopardy. Believe me, sir. Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Kevin, can I, um, I'd like to address some things. Is that possible at this time, or is it over?
Well, usually I hand to you when there's board member comments, but would you like to wait till then?
No, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to address some of the people I just spoke. And I mean, I just would like to respond to-
We'd like to hear her. Speak, there's a merk.
Um, the first person I'd like to talk to is Mrs. Kellerman. Okay, Mrs. Kellerman, you really couldn't be heard, but the gist of your conversation is the, um, amount of books and the heaviness, and the fact that students have to carry them in addition to, are, are they, in addition to a cart? Or what is-
My son has a, a big, large metal backpack.
Okay.
And stuff with books is heavy, and there's no move, he has additional books, he can fit in the backpack. And it's very hard for him to walk back and forth to school. I'm afraid he's gonna hurt his back with the weight of books. The science book alone is like this thick, it's about two inches thick. So he has probably about, uh, six subjects.
Fine, okay.
But it adds up.
I see.
A lot of the parents don't have cars, and the, the children are at risk for back problems with the weight of the books.
I'd like to ask you one more question in regard to that. What about within the school? Do they change classes that he has to lug these books with him? And being in sixth grade, is this a movement class?
Well, I, I don't know what goes on during the school day, but I know going home, he has homework in different subjects, and he has exams in different subjects. He has to bring the books home.
Fine.
I see him brings the books to school and brings them back. And he has about a fifteen-minute walk.
Well, even if he had a ten-minute walk, that's still heavy.
I mean, I have a, a car, I unfortunately to, I could drive him to school, but it's hard to pick him up. It's always the kids, the parents who have a car that will drive them to school. And not just my son, but a lot of children, their backpacks are heavy with books.
Absolutely.
Some, some school, some school districts, they give the children a, a computer when the books are online. I know, um, math book, um, I think one of the math books is online. But, uh, some school districts, there's more textbooks online, and they can access it. They're given like either iPads or little laptops.
Okay.
And, and here, it's like very antiquated, but more importantly, the kids, children's health are at risk because of the weight of the books they have to carry to and from school.
You're correct. I mean, I agree with you. Um, I will say that, you know, um, we are slowing getting into the technological area, but, um, as long as we know that you brought this up, I can assure you that if you are having a concern about your child walking, that concern would be for me also in the school, because students can't be walking around with that as well. So, um, I'm sure the board, uh, I will make sure the board will address that. And also, I'd like Mr. Fouda to have the principal to discuss this with us at a later date.
Um, may I ask who you are?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
My name is Dr. Piscatelli.
Oh, okay.
And I'm from the, West New York, and I'm on the Board of Ed. And I've been in education for forty-two years, so I think I got an idea of what you're talking about. Okay? I'll try.
I did mention this to, um, can you hear me well, alright?
I can hear you now, I just couldn't hear you before, I apologize.
I did mention this to the sec-, one of the secretaries at the school a couple of months ago, and they felt as well, they shouldn't bring home so many more books than they need. But, you know, things that they have different subjects, and people don't communicate with each other. And more importantly, a lot of books are online, this is two thousand, almost the end of two thousand fourteen. They have to, the school district has to be more aggressive in trying to minimize-
Meet the needs of the current population. Would you say that?
That's right.
Okay.
And, and the, 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 because back problems, I, I'm sure Dr. Wiley knows.
You picked the right gentleman in the audience, I can miss you, Kelly. Um, no, I thank you for your concern, and, um, what you're, what you're stating is something that's just not unique to West New York, but throughout the state. And there is a need for a transition at this time in our state onto more technology, laptops for students, et cetera. And we don't ever, as educators, want to say, oh, they don't have to bring every book home. Are we discouraging students to bring books home? I don't think so. I think we should go the opposite way.
I'm sorry, but, you know, and there's some districts, I think, after a certain rate, I think they provide a laptop or a iPad.
Yes.
Or they, and it's just maybe a couple hundred dollars. Um, or, or they maybe have the kids buy it, but I mean, this is an added district, and I mean, you get a lot of money from the state.
You're right.
Maybe you could apply for a grant.
Much more than suburbia you get, so we, we gotta put it in the right spots, okay? Alright, thank you, Mrs. Kellerman. Um, the second person I'd like to, hold on a minute. Mr. Vega?
I'd like to respond to Mr. Vega's comment about placing things on, on the website. This is a very big change for West New York. I would have to say that I was very shocked when I was put on this board, because I've never been involved with a board or a school district that didn't have elections. So I thought I was merely filling for a couple of months. Um, but I will say that one of the things that I believe strongly in is that we should be open in letting people know if we are going to start an elected board, to let people know what the qualifications are, as this young woman over here shared with us, as well as what the qualifications are. Yes, it is true, there are legal qualifications, which were put very nicely. However, there's also the other side of the coin, uh, which our lawyer had said simply about our knowledge base, and which Sarah next to me has mentioned to you. And I think it's important that we consider all of these things for the people who are going to run. And what I would think the board should do, and I don't know if it'll be approved, but Mr. Fouda and his team should sit down with people who are interested in running and share with them what are some of the qualifications that we are looking for. And that shouldn't be dependent on who you are supporting politically. That should be what is needed for our children in West New York. And I really feel very strongly about that. And I don't mind being at that debate right about. I think I covered all, and, um, one of the things that, while we're working on a board and an election, I think more openness is not only needed with the community, but with the board that sits here as well. Thank you.
At this time, the public portion of the meeting is not concluded. Sir, sir, it was already closed out, I'm sorry. It was already closed out, we, we can't, we can't reopen it, sorry. One comment, okay, one comment. This can't go on, but-
Um, I'm really glad to see the doctor answering the people and everybody here trying to work their hardest to win this election possible. Um, like Frank said, it is, I know you guys are doing it according to the law. Of course, we're gonna waste money on our special election, or we can just wait until April. And now, trustees, that's somebody talking to you, you guys have the choice right now when you go into the next year's session, to like make that decision or clarify that decision, or to think about what you guys are already doing. Um, I, I really think that we should just have one election in April and save, save our district a little bit of money. Um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
May I have your name for the record?
Um, Danny Bralas, five-five-six fifty-ninth Street.
Um, the public portion of the meeting is now concluded. The board will now recess from the executive session, discuss items which were on our exception of our open public meetings. Policy permits the board to have private discussions since it feels it is. I, I'd like a motion to adjourn executive session, re-continue public session. I have a motion.
Motion.
I have a second. President Siri?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta? Trustee Alom? Trustee Duval? Trustee Gassidou? Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, um, the board is gonna vote on the consent resolutions. I'll just mention that the one personnel item, because of a conflict with a board member, will be removed from the consent agenda and be voted on separately. So, so really, what's happening is all the items under legal, all the items under five, which are to accept the election results, adopt a nine-member board, regenization schedule, approve polling locations, establish date and time of the special board election, the, uh, notice to the public, to municipal clerk and county board of elections of the special school board election, to establish the date, time, and place for the drawings of the ballot positions, establish hourly rate of compensation for school election workers, and a budget transfer to cover the, the costs for the special election. All these items will be voted on in one single motion on the consent agenda. So therefore, all matters herein are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted upon by one motion. Any board member may request an item to be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration. Any items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed on and acted upon separately, reading at all considerations remaining items on the consent agenda. A motion or second is not required to remove an item from the consent agenda. All resolutions acted upon in this meeting are available to review this evening, and copies can be obtained by contacting the School Court Secretary's office. So at this time, the board, are there any questions for the board members? Please proceed and just vote on the items that have to do with the special, with the special election, with all the elections, now, are there any, any questions? Seeing no questions by the board, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as adopted for all of those election items?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
President Siri?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta?
Yes.
Trustee Alom?
Yes.
Trustee Duval?
Yes.
Trustee Gassidou?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, we're gonna vote on the one item that's been removed from the consent agenda is the, to rescinding the appointment of a custodial position. Um, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Sir.
Are there any questions by any board members? Seeing none, President Siri?
Yes.
Trustee Acosta?
Abstain.
Trustee Alom?
Yes.
Trustee Duval?
Yes.
Trustee Gassidou?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Piscatelli?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the voting, uh, this afternoon. Are there, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Please approach, approach the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing no one, is there, are there any comments?
Frank, for number sixty-six, we're in West New Jersey. I just wanna be able to, you know, clearly understand, so, uh, the voting that just took place that, uh, terminates the, the hiring of Mr. Acosta's sister, or whatever it is?
That, that is correct?
That is correct.
She, she can return to her, her previous position as a substitute if she so wishes.
Um, which, which was previously that, right?
That's correct.
And there's more conflict with that?
There's no conflict, she held-
The county superintendent approved it.
She held that position before her membership on the board.
Um, can you give us some of the details on this special election now? That it seems that you voted to vote this route? Um, when will there be an election? How much money is it costing?
The, the special election will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, to elect two board members to, to the board, to raise, uh, the seating board members from seven to nine. Polls will be opened from seven to nine P.M. And the poll locations will be the normal poll locations, none have been reduced, because the only way that we can reduce them is have history that less than five hundred people voted at a location pre-, in the previous two elections. Since we have had enough elections, there's no history to deem whether or not five hundred or less have voted there, so thus, our locations have to contain at this point on the, um- The polls are gonna be opened the entire day from seven, seven A.M. to nine A.M. No, seven. Seven, for a special election at seven A.M.
Alright, but, but like you know, vote at like, at six A.M.
But-
I'm only telling you-
I, I thank you for that, but, um, but so- In the statute, it says seven. It says although it's six for general, it's seven for school elections.
And, uh, how much is the election costing?
Until the elections are, we won't know the true cost. We did transfer a hundred thousand dollars to cover the estimated cost. We have no history, so we're responsible for the printing of the ballots, mailing of the ballots, paying the poll workers, um, any other costs that the city, that the town or the county have, but we are responsible.
How and who will hire the poll workers?
The poll workers are, are handled by the county, they are not, that is not a Board of Ed. The only thing we need to do is pay the bills.
Okay, so all the, all the poll workers will be hired through the county?
That's correct.
Okay, um- Alright, I think that's everything, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Hi, Wayne Cook, sixty-one thirty-one Jackson Street. Uh, great job today. This is the first time athlete that you can't, a public athlete, in like months, and did the right thing. Not only for the public, but you did the right thing for the kids of West New York. And as you know, Dr. Piscatelli, Mr. Siri, all educators, they know what to do for the right thing for the kids of West New York. Because the key here, not us, it's kids. We include my grandkids. So that's why I stand here, I'm not here because of politics. I'm here battling for three little kids. I have a nine-year-old grandson in number six school, I have a six-year-old granddaughter in number one school, and a four-year-old grandson in number one school. And I'm three generations, and for sure, I'm gonna make sure the right thing is done for the kids of West New York, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate those comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one, are there any board members who have any comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, to adjourn the meeting? Oh. This will be the last person, please.
Repeat again, Angelina King, four thirty-two fifty, West New York. Uh, referring to the, to the poll worker, by, to repeat one handed by, uh, Ms. Carmen Richey, uh, according to the-
Whoever normally handles them will be handling them, it is not a Board of Ed function.
Okay, so most, most likely will be on the, her duty system, right, to, uh, to, to call the poll worker-
I'll be, I have been in touch with the county, and I, and I, and I also have been in touch with the town. It will be taken care of, whoever's responsibility it is, by statute, that's who's, who will carry out the mission. Yeah, I, I don't think he can give you a, you know, specific advice on that, that's, you know, if you just mentioned to you, it's handled by the county. So that, that will be up for you to, to, to reach out to them if you like.
Okay, uh, do you know where the phones will be available for the people that want to, uh, to, uh, to be posted right on those positions? Do you supply the phones?
I, I have, I, I brought with me, I have six applications. Applications are available online on the New Jersey School Board's website also, but I have, as courtesy, made, um, applications for anyone who wishes to apply. There is a short window of time, it's only ten days, um, to apply. So I, I have six applications here, if anyone's interested, please see me afterwards.
What will be the days of availability? And what day will be the, the, the last, the ending date of the segment?
It is, it's, um, I don't- If, if you're not prepared to answer that question, then don't. It's in the packet, I put it in the packet.
Oh, it's in the packet, okay.
I have the date in the packet.
Okay, so, so we have to wait until then to pick up one of those phones?
If you're interested, please see me afterwards, and I have a packet, but please, if you, I only brought six, so-
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do my-
I want one.
Okay, thank you.
I got dibs on one. I called it.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
May I have a second?